The. The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier News, the Echo Sentinel, and tap into Warren, and filed with the Township of Clerk, I'm sorry, the Township Clerk of the Township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which Mrs. Lenhart has graciously agreed to lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Lenhart.
Mr. Bellish. Mr. Bishi.
Here.
Mr. Brazee.
Here.
Mrs. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. DiMaggio. Ms. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn. And Mr. Franco.
Here.
We have a quorum and may proceed.
Is this for me?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA ten four eleven permits the Board of Education to meet in a closed session to discuss certain matters. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss specific perspective or current employees, unless all who could be adversely affected request an open session. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately thirty minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Brazee. Warren Township Board of Education members only, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The board will now go into executive session.
Motion to exit executive session and come back into public session?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Warren Township Board of Education members only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Opposed, abstentions? The board is now back in open session.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lenhart. The minutes.
The Board of Education approves the public session minutes of the May twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty one board meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brazee.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Is Mrs. Zahn back on? Okay, and Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Correspondence and information.
Yes, a few things here, Mr. Franco. On the HIB investigation report, there was one investigation which was determined to be HIV at Mount Horeg School. There was one suspension at the middle school, and the board received seven emails from four individuals on return to school topics.
Okay, thank you. President's remarks. I'd like to thank everyone for what has been a difficult school year by any measure. I think we've all tried to do the best things we could for the kids in the district, although, you know, not everyone in agreement at all times. But I guess that is the nature of of having kind of difficult circumstances, but hopefully in the fall, things will get back to normal. And on that, on that note, I would like to just point out Agenda Item B sixteen, where we are, you know, asking the governor to revisit his position on the executive orders. That will come officially from us, assuming it is approved. And hopefully in the fall, like I said, that we can resume school in a you know, in what everyone knows to be a normal situation. So here's looking forward to that. And then before I pass on to Dr. Mingle, I do have the absolute privilege of reading out what is to be hand-delivered, hopefully soon, to Mrs. Lenhart. A Warren Township Board of Education Resolution of Appreciation. It is likely, Mrs. Lenhart, so here we go. Whereas Mrs. Patricia Lenhart has served the children and community of Warren Township for nearly ten years as the school business administrator and board secretary. And whereas during that time, Mrs. Lenhart served as an administrative representative to various Study to Examine Enrollment Project Committees, the Ad-Hoc Committee on the Impact of Future Development, Ad-Hoc Strategic Planning Committee, and Ad-Hoc Return to School Committee. And whereas Mrs. Lenhart has served as the administrative lead of the Finance, Operations, and Security Committee. And whereas Mrs. Lenhart has led the district's efforts to provide an exemplary educational experience while maintaining a fiscally responsible budget for the taxpayer, including leading the district through a successful referendum process with zero impact on the local tax levy, and establishing the foundation for a second referendum. And whereas Mrs. Lenhart has been recognized by her peers in the business administrator community for her work leading the county chapter of the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials, including a peer nomination for the state organization's Distinguished Service Award. And whereas Mrs. Lenhart has been recognized by her peers in the business administrators' community for her work leading the county chapter of the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials. And whereas Mrs. Lenhart has always brought her steadfast commitment to doing what is right to the Warren Township School District. And whereas Mrs. Lenhart now leaves us, leaves to use her talents elsewhere in a way that exemplifies her dedication to her family. And now therefore be it resolved that the Warren Township Board of Education, on behalf of the entire Warren Township community, does hereby extend its sincere thanks and gratitude to Mrs. Patricia Lenhart for her nearly ten years of service to the children of Warren, and does hereby wish her all the best in her future endeavors. Signed by Dr. Mingle and myself. Mrs. Lenhart, you will be sorely missed.
I'd just like to say thank you to all of the community members, administrators, and board members that I've worked through throughout my ten years here in Warren. This has been a blessing in my life. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Mingle, I don't know how you're gonna top that, but.
We should have rethought the order of these pieces, Mr. Franco.
Perhaps.
Okay, I do have several things tonight. I want to thank the board, our staff, our community, the students especially, for a positive and successful closeout to the school year. We were, it was great to have field days and our preschool kindergarten, fifth grade, eighth grade graduation ceremonies. They all looked a little bit different. Some of them were changed with less than twenty-four hours notice, but you wouldn't know it by the experience that the kids had at each one across across the board at all the different schools. I did also want to highlight that we held our first two new-style community engagement events back on May twentieth. We had a stakeholder voice-in engagement event, and on June third, our September parent information session. Both were well-attended. The feedback from the participants was very positive about the format and feeling valued and participatory, so that definitely gave us some information to use. We reviewed it at the curriculum committee just tonight for how we're planning for next year and continuing to build on that. I did want to mention for the board members that the board's self-evaluation process kicks off tomorrow, so you'll receive an email tomorrow morning from me with the form that you fill out with your evaluation of the board's business this year. That gets, that's due by Friday, and that feeds into our July retreat so that we can start, which will be our first time back in person altogether, which is great, so that we can set board goals for next year. So that, again, that'll come out in an email tomorrow. And then I did want to mention several items on the agenda this evening, if I could. Item A two has a very long name, parentheses, Safe Return Plan. This plan is required by the federal government in order for school districts across the country to receive their COVID relief funds, the the third round of that. So this gains the district access to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of COVID relief funds. I did want to mention that the wording of this is to meet the minimum requirements to receive those funds, and says that it is the intention to follow the guidelines, which reserves the ability for the board to change that intention once we know exactly what those guidelines are for September. That was an important clarification made in the Ad-Hoc Return to School Committee process last week, which is allowable in my conversations with our counties, so that's that's great news. On B sixteen, Mr. Franco already mentioned the resolution there, calling on the governor to not only bring clarity to the inconsistencies in executive orders around masking in schools versus other locations, but also around travel quarantines, which remain in place for unvaccinated students and staff members, so that we have clear guidance and common sense expectations for September. That resolution was not only supported by the Ad-Hoc Committee of Board Members, but by the District's Return to School Committee, which which includes nurses and teachers and other staff members. These seventeen and eighteen are the two items related to the National School Lunch Program. I will, I'm sure the board will have questions when we get to the actual motion and second, which I can answer. But just for clarity's sake, those are the two motions that would approve a one-year participation in the National School Lunch Program, which is due to funding being provided by the federal government as part of COVID relief to provide all children in the United States a free, healthy lunch next year. Again, I'm sure we'll talk about that more later. On C one, you can see there's a long list of new staff appointments. We're very excited about those staff appointments. And several of those names will come up on other places this evening. And on C twenty-one, finally, that is a motion for a successor business administrator. It doesn't have a name there, so I will announce the name now. That person met with the board in executive session prior to the meeting. That is for Christopher Hagel. H E A G E L E, for those that are keeping track on their agendas at home. That'll be in the minutes, of course, but the motion on C twenty-one, when it's read, is for Christopher Hagel. With that, I'd also just like to say welcome to the many substitutes who I see on the call tonight who are here for their recognition. And actually, Mr. Franco, do you want to just go right into that?
Uh, yeah, but one thing I forgot to mention is that I I did have the 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 privilege of addressing the middle school students at the graduation last week, and I had also the privilege of handing each one of them their diplomas to move on to high school, and that was certainly a highlight of my tenure on the board. So I think it was a great day. We had good weather. And, you know, we wish all those students well as they move into high school.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Franco.
Okay.
Alright, so in any year, it's important for us to recognize the importance of our substitutes and what they do to keep our schools moving on a day-to-day basis, and probably never more than it has been this past year. And so each each person who served as a substitute teacher, nurse, or paraprofessional over the course of the two thousand and twenty twenty-one school year is being delivered a certificate of appreciation, signed by Mr. Franco and myself for their work throughout this year. But I wanted to highlight a few things, and with thanks to my assistant Sandy Dodd, who put together some of this information for us for tonight. Our diverse substitute pool includes people who are former students of ours, several bilingual staff members, spouses and children of full-time employees, a number of college students who are pursuing their own careers in education down the road, and also some local retired educators as well. And that combination of skills really helps fill out the substitute pool and bring us experiences for the kids, so that even when a teacher is out and they have a substitute, it's a positive learning environment. And as you have probably seen over the course of time, many of these names eventually show up on a motion for full-time employment in a position down the road. As far as the substitutes who worked throughout the school year this year, the list on the screen right now are all the substitutes who spent up at least one day, up to twenty-five percent of the one hundred and eighty school days this year working in the schools. That's quite a lot for somebody who is doing this as a small, part-time, additional commitment. I'm just gonna pause here for a minute and give you a chance to read over the names on the screen. Continuing on, there are also six substitutes who worked more than twenty-five percent and up to half of the available school days, and you'll notice that Mr. Henry moved from substituting to a contractual leave replacement. Otherwise, he would be on this for even more time. And Ms. Cooper, who is on tonight's agenda for full-time appointment in the district as well. We also have two individuals who worked more than fifty percent of the time, up to seventy-five percent of the available school days. And then amazingly, we have Ms. Moon, who worked ninety-five percent of the school days this year at one hundred and seventy-one point five of our one hundred and eighty school days, who is also on tonight's agenda for a full-time appointment as a paraprofessional. And so with that, I would just like to say thank you to the many substitutes who are on the call tonight. Thank you for the sacrifices you made or for choosing us over some surrounding communities, perhaps, if you had those options. And thank you to Sandy Dodd, who is our liaison to the substitutes for making sure they're well taken care of, and appreciate it. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Franco. Thank you to everyone.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mingle, and thank you, everyone that has stepped up and and been there from when when our regular teachers couldn't be there. So we appreciate that. Discussion items. I think we'll hit a couple of the agenda items, I'm sure, as we get to them. So I think we'll move on. Committee reports. Mrs. DiMaggio.
Hi, thank you. My volume up. Yeah. Hi. So Curriculum Communications Technology, we met earlier this evening from five fifteen to six fifteen. The bulk of our conversation was on sorry, the bulk of our conversation was on the plan we previously had recommended to the full board about returning to in-person board meetings, which is starting July nineteenth for us. The plan was returning in person July nineteenth, open to the public. The meeting would be recorded in full and posted the next day to the district website. And there would be no real-time public participation via technology. However, there has been an executive order, number two four two. And we, it's updated guidance, basically, and part of that is that it established that public bodies may conduct in-person public meetings without masking or social distancing requirements and without capacity limits. The other part of that executive order states it is extending the allowance for remote access to meetings, including remote public comment. However, it's unclear right now how long this extension will be. Our legal counsel, Dr. Minger, did, you know, seek legal counsel, thinks it may be until January two thousand and twenty-two. However, nobody knows. In our committee discussion, the committee recommends possibly allowing Zoom access to the live in-person meeting on July nineteenth with public commentary through the December two thousand and twenty-one meeting in accordance with the board bylaws, and commentators will be reminded about chain-of-command options for addressing individual concerns. And now, you know, all of that could always change depending on more executive orders, but that's kind of our new timeline and plan since the governor's updated guidance on Executive Order two four two. Then we talked about stakeholder engagement event follow-up, like Dr. Mingle Mingle mentioned in his opening statements. May twentieth, June third, they went really well, a lot of positive feedback. And then Mr. Kimmick provided a lot of information about K to five report scales and how we're going to move from COVID nineteen. And now, so we're transitioning out of the system used during COVID nineteen, and now we're going to return to school. Everything's still with our existing policy requirements. And the scales that will be used were created by teachers as we're trying to plan for September two thousand and twenty-one through June two thousand and twenty-two. Then we had a summary of our spring already results. And then we also decided, and Dr. Mingle obviously recommended, that we're going to establish a meeting date in July. Currently, we only have one on the books for August for curriculum revision, but we're going to definitely have another meeting in July. And that's it. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. DiMaggio. Other committee reports. Mr. Brazee.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. The Finance, Operations, and Security Committee met on Wednesday, June sixteenth at five P M. The board has a copy of our minutes. I'll review the items discussed. It included the updated pilot student demographics. This is based on newer studies that were made available. The Lindbergh Avenue project for K through eight is projected at thirty-four students. And the Toll Brothers project for K through eight is at twenty-three students. Again, these, of course, are demographical projections and certainly nothing definitive at this point. The Pop Warner Field Maintenance Costs were discussed. The committee does support increasing the school board's contribution from five thousand to ten thousand dollars. The National School Lunch Program. The committee reviewed and discussed questions, including the RFP results, as well as the requirements to the RFP. The end-of-year deposit to capital reserve was discussed. That is on tonight's agenda as item B six, if I'm not mistaken. And this is a, as it's done every year, it's a not-to-exceed amount, so it's a little bit higher than normals to prevent us from having to come back and revisit that. Referendum two thousand and nineteen, milestone, and this hats off to Pat, Mrs. Leonard, for this. The milestone is all projects and all financials are complete, which is, that's absolutely huge. And the even better news to that is we ended up coming in five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars under budget. And once that amount is reviewed by the auditors, we will be able to put that, let's call it six hundred thousand, into our capital reserve. So again, Mrs. London and your team, thank you very much for all you've done for the referendum two thousand and nineteen budget. And that leads us to referendum two thousand and twenty-one. Hopefully, your cell phone still works, Mrs. Leonard. I may have a call for you. The state has approved all referendum projects for the two thousand and twenty-one budget, which which is, you know, certainly the initial milestone that we're looking for there, and as well as a capital reserve review to be done. The next committee meeting is scheduled for August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at six P M. We will have a pair of large shoes there to be filled. I just realized that's in August and not in July. So in the other finance committee, a topic, I'll call it Dr. Mingle and Mrs. Leonard did present the Warren Township Board of Education budget to the Warren Township Committee at the committee's June seventeenth, eight A M meeting I attended as well. And that is all I have, Mr. Franco.
Thank you, Mr. Brazee. Any other committee reports? Mr. Bishi.
Ad hoc regionalization committee met on June seventh and, you know, discussed the proposed regionalization study that the high school, you know, has proposed to us and is looking for participants from the sending districts. We decided that it'd be better to participate than not and have a seat at the table and know what's going on and have input than not participate. However, we would need to perform more due diligence. And two milestones there would just be the legislation that has to pass in Trenton. I think it's passed the Senate and the Assembly Education Committee, but it hasn't yet passed the Assembly. So we need the rulebook or the legislation to actually fully consider it and perform our due diligence. And secondly, we'd like to speak with our attorney at the board meeting in July. In the minutes that Matt passed out, he had said that, you know, the high school didn't reach out to us. Well, they actually did reach out to us. The president reached out. So I had just spoken to Shabil, the president of the High School Board of Ed, and mentioned what I just said. Now, you know, we need to have the legislation pass so we know what to evaluate, and we will not have an answer to them by the end of June. There was a June deadline that some folks had. Because the fiscal year ends in June, they wanted to get it done by June. I said we wouldn't have an answer to them by June. And then what Dr. Mingle also put in, you'll see in the minutes, was subsequent events out of the, or subsequent excerpts out of that legislation that actually said that we kind of have to represent that we will regionalize, regionalize, regionalize. We're supportive of the regionalization in order to actually participate in the study. And I don't know that we can represent that we're supportive of regionalization. So I don't know, and this is subsequent to our committee meeting. I don't know that we can represent that we're supportive in order to actually move forward with the study. So that's the update.
That was, that was the requirement, that we had to be supportive of it in order to be involved in the study?
Yeah, it said like, in the the text of the bill, I'm trying to find it. You have to actually, you have to be planning to regionalize.
Regionalize.
A school district in order to actually apply for the study. That was new, Mark. In the excerpts that Dr. Mingle put in the bottom, you'll see he highlighted one of those excerpts. So I think how it was laid out originally months ago may have morphed a bit as the legislation went through, you know, the various levels in Trenton. So that, I think, is problematic, although that's me personally speaking. We, because that was subsequent to our committee meeting, we haven't had a chance at the committee meeting to discuss.
Yeah, I think taking any position on something before you've done the study is problematic, right?
It's chicken and egg.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you need to study in order to figure out whether you do want to regionalize, and there's, we have to kind of represent that we want to. So it's problematic.
Mrs. Zone.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just want to throw in a small correction here. I completely agree that the language that we've been showing now is not how this was represented to us previously, but it is not a commitment to regionalize, that they're looking for. It's a commitment to adopt the recommendations of the study. So I don't, we don't know what those will be, so that raises the same issue about, you know, agreeing to something we don't know what it is. But I just want to make sure that we're, we understand that the ask of the, and this is the LEAP application for the funding piece, requires the people, the entities, districts that are seeking the funding will represent that they will make good faith effort to adopt the findings. May not be.
That, I mean, that's hard anyway, right? Because even if, even if the findings are a certain way, don't you have to go to the voters?
No question. No question. I'm not saying that, so could I, this is a new twist, definitely contrary to what.
They never make it easy. They never make it.
They don't. And I wish that, I I just, I feel a little bit like we weren't that, you know, they weren't straight with us, kind of. That's how I feel. But, yeah, but I just want to make sure that that, since, you know, this gets recorded and it's out there and people see this, that the ask isn't that we agreed to regionalizations, that we agree to adopt the study's findings. So.
Yeah, and and I see that as part two of two, what I was, and I wanted to mention that. Miss Sun, but part one of two is the language that I was talking about was, it says that they'll they'll pay for studies that support the creation of meaningful and implementable plans to form or expand regional school districts. So that's the object. That was one of my concerns, and yours, yeah, that's another concern as well, Miss Sun, you know.
And Mark, I'm sorry, Mr. Bishi, do we know where the other sending districts stand on this?
Long Hill, I think, is having the same reservations, and I'm just speaking from what's publicly available on the Echo Sentinel. They kind of saw this language and had similar reservations. And I don't want to speak for, I think that hearsay is that Wachong's not interested in Greenbrook is.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Mr. Bishi. Sure. Any other committee reports, Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Mingle?
Yes, that, everything that we talked about at Ad-Hoc Return to School has already been addressed in our opening comments. I just wanted to mention that the committee did meet last week to prepare those things.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Okay, we're gonna open up for public commentary. This is the first of two public commentary sections. This set of public commentary is for agenda items only. This set of public commentary is for agenda items only. You will have three minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and address, turn on your camera. And I will do my best to give you a twenty second warning when your time is up. Please use the raise my hand feature in Zoom, and I will call on you in the order in which you have raised your hand. Mrs. Singleton.
Rachel Singleton. To try Western War. And isn't that what you've just discussed about the regionalization? Being asked to agree to something before it's before it's been determined. Exactly the same as what you're being asked to do in respect of the return to school and the guidelines from the C D C, the Department of Education. And the Department of Health in Jersey. So what you're the problems that you have with agreeing to stipulations that you have no idea about is a problem for reason regionalization. But it's not going to be a problem for return to school. These two are not any different, yet there's discussion about it here as being a bad thing, but. Not necessarily heard anything too detrimental about it for the return to school. Also, on the agenda, I noticed that there were two legal proceedings. Legal settlements, B twelve and B thirteen. And I know you can't give names or exact descriptions, but I was wondering just. Roughly what that was around with regard to the legal settlements. Because that would be interesting to know. And isn't the time to talk about the National Food Program? Is now the time to talk about the National Food Program, Mr. Franco?
If you've got a comment about it.
Yeah, I was just wondering how how many children it affects. Effectively, like the children that really need free food. Because it's affecting all the children in Warren. Go. And choose it. So I'm versus, can you not hear me?
You're breaking up.
Yeah, you're breaking up quite badly, Mrs. Singleton.
I was just wondering how many children.
We got, we heard, we heard that question. Okay. We'll try. If 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 Dr. doesn't answer your questions, we'll let you come back and and follow.
Okay.
Mrs. Carter.
Hi, Darlene Carter, Mount Cora P T O co-president. Fifty Casal Drive South. Thank you so much for your time tonight. I just wanted, I just had a few questions and concerns about the food program. First, I just wanted to understand, is the federal government giving a deadline on when we need to make a decision? Tonight's vote seems very rushed to me. We haven't really received any parents' input on what food is being provided to their children. Many people I spoke to didn't even know this was happening. Why haven't we been transparent with the community regarding this? Provided surveys, et cetera, like we have done with everything else this year. I just feel like this is a very big change and we've been very quiet about it. My second question is, how is the vendor keeping cold food cold, cold food cold? And hot food hot when on a good day, the food vendor is forty five minutes away? What is the contingency when they don't make it to school on time or at all? I personally would have preferred if we got at least one bid from a local vendor or somewhat close and. This person is forty five minutes away on a good day. And lastly, I just want to understand why not discuss. Or think of creative ways to help the families in need versus changing an entire food program. That can hurt local businesses that are already suffering. They have. They've missed out on food days last year because of everything that has happened. And they were relying on us, hoping that this year we would be able to work with them again. And assuming that the D O H gave us. The guidelines in place, we have talked about different things that we can do. So I'm just wondering, why not think of creative ways that we can help? The small number of families that are in need. Because I certainly don't want to say no on giving free food to anybody, but I'm not sure that this program makes sense for our town. And it just. It just seems very rushed and we haven't gotten the community's input on this, on what people really want. So. Thank you. I appreciate your time. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Carr.
Thank you.
There is no more hands. There are no more hands raised. Dr. Mingle, if you wanted to maybe tackle a couple of those questions.
Yeah, so I can comment here on on legal settlements, of course, but. I can definitely jump into the the National School Lunch Program questions. First, I'd like to just kind of summarize the process that got us to a recommendation to the board tonight. So. In late April is when Mrs. Lenhart and I first. It became public information that the federal government authorized this program for the year. We had to move quickly because the deadline to apply was something like a week later, when we got the original, just to get the paperwork started. We reviewed the concept on May fourth with our P T O presidents. Where we asked the P T O presidents to go back to their executive boards and bring us feedback and questions, which they did. Three of those P T O sent us written support upfront, A L T Central and the middle school. Based on the feedback they got from their executive board, but they all had the same kind of questions that Mrs. Carter brought up too about. Programs, how does this affect the local vendors, the food and so on? On May fifth, we reviewed our initial thinking and concerns with the ad hoc return to school committee so that they were aware of what was going on. On May nineteenth, we finalized a recommendation to move to a bidding process with the ad hoc return to school committee. Which and that was supported by both the leadership team and the district's return to school committee. On May twentieth. We had another P T O president's meeting where we reviewed the process for bidding so that they would understand what was going on. We addressed questions about the N S L P program requirements. And we made a meeting date for the day after the bids were due in so that we could update them before anything became public. On May twenty fourth, we presented the plan to enter the N S L P in our presentation about September two thousand twenty one. That was at the board meeting on May twenty fourth. On June third, we addressed it at the parent information session. And that recording was subsequently made available to all of our parents. Last week, when we got our bids, we only received one bid and tried to transition to the questions. We reviewed those with the P T O presidents last Wednesday and addressed additional questions that came up, including. Agreeing that we would schedule a meeting in July to discuss how the district might be able to support programs the P T O's normally support, since they'll lose the revenue stream of food days for one year. And then we're here tonight. So let me kind of go to the other questions here. About how many children does it affect and? One of the important pieces is this is available to every single child. In the district, in the in the United States. You do not have to meet a threshold for financial need to access the free lunch program in this one year. It actually applied to last year as well, if you were already in the program. We believe that there are many more children and families who would benefit from having access to a healthy free lunch than the number of kids we currently help support. This year, thanks to Mrs. Lenhart's work, thanks to private donations from community members, from the Lions Club. We've been providing first food and then gift cards to local supermarkets. To approximately the families of approximately twenty students. That is through blood, sweat and tears to raise the money to be able to do that. That's not a sustainable way to support families in need, and we only know about them if a school counselor or a nurse happens to know that that's an issue. We know that there are families who don't want to help themselves that way. This solution provides a way for every single child to have a meal that meets the federal health requirements at no cost to their family, just for this one year. We have no idea what happens beyond that. Is the federal government giving a deadline? Yes, not only the the deadline for applying passed. A while ago, but it takes a time to ramp up a program like this, which is why it's on the agenda tonight. And Mrs. Lohner, you can jump in and share additional information if you have it on the timing or any of the other questions that came up, and I can go back from there.
This meeting signifies the last opportunity of the Board of Education to approve participation. The vendor, the vendor has a deep history of providing meals, both indirectly in schools and. In the senior citizen population and working with them so far has been very promising.
Thank you, Mrs. Lenhart. And I did want to mention the vendor, there was only one bid, but the bidder meets all the requirements and the way public bidding works is that's the definition of success. So we can't. Judge them for not meeting requirements that they haven't had a chance to not meet yet. Keeping the food at the appropriate temperatures is part of the bid specifications. The National School Lunch Program. Is extremely strict on the protocols for how food is prepared, served, transported, and what it contains. The contingency, actually, Mrs. Tujia was one of our principals and came to a P T O meeting. This happens sometimes with food days as well, where the food just doesn't come for some reason. We would have to have a backup plan for that as well in this situation. One common question that wasn't asked, but I know I've been receiving it is, won't there be food waste? And I think that comes from the fact that in some communities. They just order a whole lot of food and then whatever is not served goes to waste. That is not our plan. Our plan is to have something similar to food days where parents will order the food they want. They'll have an alternative to the hot item. And obviously they can pack their lunch if they want to. We're not just going to force students to take this lunch. It's only going to be for the people who want to participate. I would have preferred to have a local vendor bid as well, but they didn't. Again, it's very strict requirements, so I understand. And again, on the creative ways to help families in need, I think we've been doing that over the last few years. We've tried really hard. But it's it can't compete with providing a free, healthy lunch to every every child. So those are the reasons why we've recommended it to the board tonight for action. I'm sure if there are board members with other questions, we can answer them when we get to the business agenda as well.
Okay. Ms. Carter, I see your hand is up again. We'll have a second public commentary section. And although you.
I'll lower it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving on to agenda items for board consideration. Is there any agenda item anyone would like to further discuss? Or pull for a separate vote? I assume we should maybe pull. This very topic, the was it eighteen?
Seventeen and eighteen.
So let's pull seventeen and eighteen for separate discussion, potentially a separate vote. Mr. Bishi.
Also want to pull B six for discussion and be like Bravo and D one, D like David one.
And Mr. Brazee.
I'd have commented on C six, but I'd like to pull C twenty one for a separate vote as well.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Bishi.
On the B six, I hate this to be your last question, Miss Lenhart, but of your career at Warren. If if we, I think when we went back to the budget, we I asked a question this morning, and I don't think I asked it correctly. When we went back to when we approved the budget, I think. Our deposit to the capital reserve was. Was like two point our anticipated deposit into the capital reserve was like two point seven five million. And that's apples to apples. That's what's now increased to the three point one five. Can I view it that way? Like, we have a bit more available to deposit into the capital reserve.
We do, we do. And so do I think we're going to deposit three point one five million? I don't. But this is a not to exceed, and it would be detrimental to the district if we undershot that number. Because what would happen is then the revenue stream for twenty one, twenty two would be higher than our footprint that we maintain. So it's probably going to be a little closer to three. And yes, then there has been an increase, but one of the biggest. Areas of fluctuation are utility bills, which you don't know as much in February, March as you do in June. And and things just shake out, substitute usage shakes out. Yes, so you're right. It did increase from that time. We feel a little bit more confident about this number, but this number is a max and not to exceed.
And if we brought the max down to the two point seven five, two point seven five that we discussed three months ago. The difference would either just kind of flow to capital, pardon me, surplus or to ultimately could float a taxpayer relief.
So I would never, it would not be my administrative recommendation to allow it to float a undesigned fund balance because. If you've ever looked at the amount that we allocate for that, it's always a very similar number, albeit the last ten hundred thousand. So for the instance, four hundred fifty eight thousand was the seventeen eighteen year, four hundred fifty nine thousand was the eighteen nineteen, or sixty was nineteen twenty, et cetera. By maintaining a stability footprint. Then we we no business administrator is ever starting the budgeting process already behind the eight ball. Because let's just say we took another two hundred thousand for the next budget we would build would be twenty two, twenty three. So let's say we took twenty two, twenty three would be four sixty three, but let's say we made it six sixty three. Well, that would be wonderful for the twenty two, twenty three budget creation. But now, if you get to twenty three, twenty four, chances are you're two hundred thousand dollars behind the eight ball before you have been gone the budgeting process. So this is the administration's recommendation.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brazee, C six.
I just wanted to mention, Mr. Barry, he's been, in my opinion, instrumental to the district in terms of. Our security compliance as well as actual security itself. He's been certainly wonderful to work with, extremely accommodating, twenty five hours a day, thinks about this district and. What we can do, how to improve it. So just a thank you to him for all of his work. It's been. I've learned a lot working with him and certainly wish him the best. Also, Ms. Leonard is on here, which, you know, I'm sad to see go. I'm sure she. Never anticipated, you know, directing traffic every morning and afternoon, which she took this position, but she does so. With a smile at A L T, and I think every car knows her, whether your child is with her or not, that they she waves to you. She knows, she knows every family's car. And multiple cars and who else had grandma and grandpa's car that has to come pick up a child. It's amazing, and I'm sure that's at all schools, but it's a it's a big loss to the district, in my opinion, to see. Her go, and I certainly wish her the best on her future endeavors. So. Thank you, Mr. Franco.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brazee. Like to open up the board discussion on B seventeen and B eighteen. Regarding the school lunch program, if anyone has any comments or questions, now is the time. Anyone, Mr. Bishi?
Just I didn't know. I'm curious why we only got one. Bid back, and I didn't know if this is something like you you advertise in the Star Ledger or some website and people have to look for it. Or vendors, potential vendors have to see our ad, or is this where we actively went out to like a dozen different vendors? And only one came back and replied to us because the other eleven, you know, chose not to. I didn't know. Why only?
Dr. Mingle, would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
So there's two parts of this. One is by law, we have to run an ad in the paper. There's three parts of it. We have to run it out in the paper. Number two is that I had personally reached out to three different vendors. Two of which are long established food service management companies, and the other is coincidentally this company that did in the end. Bid. And then the third is that what happens in that world is they belong to a service. I believe it was called Bid Serve. And it's Bid Serve's job to be on top of all the bids that are out there in this world and distribute them to their membership. And that's probably the biggest venue for. Bringing light to your your R F K.
So really, nobody else like I, so nobody else even considered, we didn't even get a bid back from anybody like. If we're if we're going to participate, it's not like we have our choice. This is pretty much the only vendor that's up.
That's a true statement. You have to realize that we're a very unique situation. We don't have a kitchen. Right? In the entire district, we can't even have a base of one school. We don't have a kitchen in any of our five schools. That that makes us very unique.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a question. So if hypothetically, this solution is voted down. What are the alternatives and why is the current alternative not currently an alternative, or am I misstating that?
So I would say it could be, but we we haven't been working on an alternative because this was the path. We were going down this path to see if there were bids. With the understanding if there were bids, we were moving forward once we made that decision a month ago. If it was voted down, then we would have to go and see whether or not food days was a possibility. I and whether it was a possibility at every school or not. So. People may not be aware right now that it looks very different at different schools. Woodland has a completely different model than the other three elementary schools. The middle school is obviously a different challenge. So that would be the next step to figure out if we. If it wasn't.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any comments on this? Anybody else have any comments on this topic?
Sorry, I just have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Frank.
Oh, sorry, did I take someone else's spot?
You did, but it's all right.
Okay. Um, I, I think it's a valid point, right, that we're a forty-five minute trip from kind of their hub, or I think it's in Carney. And I'm just curious, do we, and maybe this is part of the RFP process, if it is, I would appreciate being enlightened. Do they have other customers or schools that are forty-five minutes away plus? And if so, how do they handle snow, bad weather, food realities of delays, et cetera? Because I think that is a legitimate point, and I think it might be alleviated if we knew that they have other equidistant schools that they serve, and maybe how that's handled.
Um, so I did not Google map any of the distances, but I did speak to three districts who all, they serve, and all gave them flying reviews. I cannot speak to the distance.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
One thing I want to mention on that, and, and I'm not suggesting that this is true for this company, I want that to be clear. But there are many companies in these situations who have separate corporate offices and then different locations where they distribute from. I'm not saying that's the case here. We don't know that. That's not information we have access to. And I think the number is something like they serve thirty thousand meals a day right now. So they, they bid on the, on this, knowing where they had to get it to and what the conditions were to get it there, for, for whatever that's worth. It doesn't mean that there won't be a problem, but that's, they knew what they were bidding on.
Yep, okay, makes sense.
Ms. Keller?
Yes. So I, I probably had the most questions. I'm sure Dr. Mingle, Ms. Lenhart was annoyed with my series of questions I asked about the distance, and, and yeah, the people, the, the schools that gave the references were all between eight and eleven miles. But to be fair, that's North Jersey, so that's a whole different, you could say that it takes forty-five minutes to go eight miles in your, in the heart of Jersey City, Carney, and, and North Bergen. So I had a lot of questions around the distance. I had a lot of questions around, you know, sort of quality, and you know, I think my original sentiment around this was just the known, the known versus the unknown, right? I think for me, a lot of my concerns are really hypothetical. And so, once I saw the responses and, you know, sort of the, the thing around the, the positive references and, you know, sort of the reputation of this vendor, you know, I, I felt a lot more comfortable with, with them. I do really, and I know we're accountable to the students and the schools, but I do feel tremendous responsibility for the broader community. So the, you know, the restaurants, and I think that that food days does have a really important role in, in the broader community. I, what I would maybe want to understand is a little bit more about the, sort of the contract and the repercussions for this. So I can take the hypothetical out, like, what if something goes wrong? You know, let's assume it's good quality. Let's, let's just assume all things, this is sort of, to me, this is like a win-win, right? We have pretty, you know, decent, you know, we have the opportunity to have free lunches for all of our students, which is awesome. And then we have the option, opportunity to explore whether or not we can do food days, right? So, you know, I consider that to be a, a great situation that we can choose between these two scenarios. I would like to maybe understand a little bit more about sort of the, the contract, the relationship, right? It's a little bit clearer to me, we're working with a Benny's Kitchen, we're working with a, a local pizzeria, right? It's, it's a, it's a, it's a more, it's a closer relationship, right? But I know that this is going to be a little bit different, so if you, if one of you could just shed a little bit more light on kind of how that, how that'll look, you know, what, what's that, what's that going to function like? If there are issues, you know, can things be escalated? Because there can be things that go wrong regardless of what use cases. So if you guys could just shed a little bit more light on that, I think that'd be helpful.
I think that would be more Mrs. Lenhart's department on the contract side.
It is. I'm trying to look quickly at the RFP, because I know it did have a termination clause. I'm just looking for it quickly. If people wanted to go on and consider, discuss it, I'll look it up real quick.
Mr. Bishi?
Could I append? Actually, I wanted to append on Ms. Keller's question. So it's normally you have like a, a contract, right? So it's us on one side of the contract and the vendor on the other. But the weird thing is here, I guess we also have the government. And so I'm wondering, to your point, Ms. Keller, like, if things go horribly wrong in November, I guess if it were just a contract, is there an out, like, Ms. Lenhart, you're looking in the contract with the vendor? Does the government say, oh, no, 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 you've got a full, you know, you've got to follow this through till June of twenty twenty-two? Like, and, and Ms. Lenhart, you were talking about like a deadline, this is the last time we have to act. Is that a vendor deadline, or is that a government deadline? The weird thing is, there's three parties now, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay, so, um, it's a sixty-day clause on the contract, and, um, the deadline is federal, I believe, federal government, but at a minimum state government mandated.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Franco. I, I guess I would have less of a concern if it was not a year-long commitment, and should we be able to ramp up and get food days operating with our local vendors that obviously we have, you know, community relationships with and feel more comfortable with? I think I would feel better, but as, from what I understand, it's a year-long commitment. And if we vote in favor of this, then we are precluded from pursuing food days or any other alternative until the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so you're not allowed to have competing food service programs in, when you're a part of the National School Lunch Program. And the reason it's a year long is because that's what the federal program is for the funding. So if we went to food days, we would not be able to provide a no-cost lunch that meets the federal health requirements.
Okay.
But you're, so your understanding is right.
Ms. Keller?
All right, could you clarify what the sixty-day clause, what that means?
I'm going to read right from the contract, because it's not that bad. The following language will be incorporated in the contract. This comes from the proposals. The LEA, that's a local education agency, which is this district, or CV, contracted vendor, may cancel this contract for cause by giving sixty days written notification to the other party. The LEA or CV may terminate this contract at any time if it is prevented or delayed from fulfilling the terms of the contract due to war, strike, fire, flood, act of God, or any act not within its control, and which by the exercise of due diligence, it was unable to prevent. In such event, the LEA or CV, as the case may be, shall give written notice to the other party setting forth the reason for and the effective date of termination. Neither party shall be liable for any loss or penalty upon termination, except LEA shall pay CV for vending meals delivered in accordance with this contract prior to the termination date.
The worst-case scenario, we can give them sixty days' notice for any or no reason at all.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's not how I heard it. What, if we're dissatisfied with them, we cannot cancel.
Yeah, that, I didn't.
No, the first line was, the LEA or CV may cancel this contract for cause by giving sixty days' written notification to the other party.
For cause.
Either one.
For cause.
Period. Then the rest of it was, you don't have to have a sixty-day clause if there are extraordinary circumstances.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on this topic, Ms. Clark?
So, should we determine in sixty days that the community is able to support the schools within the community from community businesses, then we can terminate this contract with any negative impact to the district, the board, you know, financially, monetarily, anything like that?
Can I speak for a second, Dr. Mingle? As the party that signs contracts on behalf of the district, I feel we're getting into a good faith scenario here. I've been working with the vendor. They're going to put resources into establishing staffing and the resources in which to execute this contract. If it is not the board's desire to see this through, then perhaps that feels disingenuous for me to sign the contract.
Yeah, Mrs. Zone?
Understood.
Yes, thank you. In keeping with my position that I think the public should know where individual board members stand on things when they vote, I do want to acknowledge that I've received a number of parent communications on this, all of which I have thought very hard about and taken into consideration. It does weigh heavily on me, or I take into great consideration the fact that three of the five PTOs expressed support for this. I am going to support this contract, and I agree with Mrs. Lenhart that we should enter into any contract with the intention that we will follow it to completion and act in good faith at all times. But I do want to make sure that any parents who have communicated understand that I read and actually considered all of the questions that they have put forth and gave great weight to, to all of the concerns that have been raised. Thank you.
Just to add my two cents, I mean, what a fortunate place we find ourselves that we can look at a free lunch program and say, eh, maybe not. You know, this is, uh, you know, we have to, we have to consider ourselves lucky that, that that's an option for us. And while individually, you know, some of us may feel that way, I'm sure there are plenty of people with, within the district that would be quite happy not to have to pay for lunch for a whole year. So, you know, following Mrs. Zone's example, I, I, I would support this as well. You're not forced to partake in the program if you wish not to. Obviously, you have to send lunch separately, but you certainly don't have to, to, to eat the food or have your kids eat the food if you don't want them to. That's just my two cents. Okay, I think we can move the board, the agenda items for vote. Mr. Bishi, I believe we have to pull a one for a separate vote as well.
Just a one?
Yes.
Not today, no.
Not today? Okay, sorry. Sorry.
And Mr. Brizzy, C six was just a comment, right? I'll have to pull that separately, right?
Yeah, correct. I did ask for, let me get it again, C twenty-one to be a separate vote as well, if possible.
Got you. Then, then the only apologies, Mr. Franco, just one last question, Dr. Mingle, on the policy regarding, where we have to make a choice on O one, three, one. Is the choice that we're making most in line with our current policy? Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes. And just to clarify, if there, whenever there's choices in a policy like that, if it's, it's whatever was in our existing policy, and if there's something new, then that would have to either go to a committee, or I'd make a recommendation to highlight it for you.
Got it, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
So yeah, so personally, I'm only going to pull for my own, I, I'd like to pull B six, but other than that, I think everybody else is okay?
Well, I think we should pull seventeen and eighteen as well.
Okay. Okay, motion to approve items for board consideration, A one through A four, B one through B five, B seven through B nineteen, no, B seven through B sixteen.
Yes.
And B nineteen, C one through C twenty-three, and D one through D three. Want to repeat that, or was that clear?
You're muted, Mrs. Lenhart.
Sorry, A one through four, B one through five, B seven through sixteen, B nineteen, C, all of C and all of D.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I think Mr. Brizzy asked for C twenty-one to be separated. It's fine, you can go as it is. I'm going to stay for the whole thing. It's easy.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brizzy?
I abstained.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Sorry, I completely lost internet and literally just came back on as my name was being stated. Can you please tell me what I'm voting on?
Absolutely. All of A.
All of A, okay.
Okay. B without B six, and B without the National School Lunch Program, seventeen and eighteen, all of C, all of D.
Okay, yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Motion to approve item for board consideration, B six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bishi?
No.
Mr. Brizzy?
Yes, do you want me to remove the motion, Mr. Bishi? I think.
You can't vote no on a motion, you move yourself, right, is that?
Yes, that's a true statement.
I would like to move item B six.
I will still second it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bishi, you voted no. Mr. Brizzy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Bishi, would you like me to move motions for B seventeen and eighteen?
Yes, and I will second that.
Oh, okay.
But go ahead.
I just don't want, I just don't want to put you on the spot.
Okay. Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brizzy?
Was that a yes, Mr. Brizzy?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
No.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Okay. Unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Anyone like to bring up? Okay, new business? No, Mrs. DiMaggio?
Um, I just wanted to congratulate our new approved BA. That's all, thank you.
I know he is sitting there with his wife watching, so.
Yes.
Hopefully, he took his tie off by now, but congratulations, Mr. Hagel. Okay. Public commentary, this is the second set of public commentary. This can be on any topic whatsoever. You will again have three minutes to make your comment. Please state your name and address, turn on your camera, and I will do my best to give you a twenty-second warning. Mrs. Jelitovic?
Hi, Maria Jelitovic, eighteen, King George Road. I have three kids at ALT, now first, third, and fifth. I just had a question about when there is going to be potential discussion about the iReady program. I was wondering if the staff has been polled to see how they like the program. I myself, I don't have a problem with Common Core, the way Common Core teaches math, that's not an issue for me. I don't like the usage of the electronics. I find that it hinders students from showing the math work. And then, it's gotten a lot better, particularly when they were in school all the time, and then they were taking the tests regularly so that the teachers can say, oh, okay, well, you missed this problem, but I saw the work that you did. When it's a paper test, they do the work. They show the math work, but when it's online, how can you tell if a student is guessed? Like, I know that the program is set up, so like, this is an answer, if you got it wrong, it might be this. Or, and that, that helps guide the teachers, but I just find that I don't particularly like this program in terms, I think I would like it better if there was more, if I felt like the teachers got more information. But I find that when you're online, you don't know, like, because some students are very conceptual, and they may get their basic math facts wrong, but they understand the concept. And then other students understand all their basic math facts, but they're not getting the concept. And how is that program really? I, I don't feel like that program is very good in giving that as, because you don't have the visual work to be able to see that. You don't see their written work when it's online, from a teacher's perspective. But I don't know how, if the teachers feel that way, so I was wondering if the district was going to poll them or not. And the other thing, it sounds like the food lunch program is a great thing. Yay, yay, okay, bye.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised, someone with the name iPhone, whoever that happens to be.
Yeah, doing it on the phone tonight, Jennifer Armey, twenty-four, Briarwood Drive East. I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure of attending both the fifth grade Mount Horr graduation and the middle school graduation this. Um, I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure of attending both the fifth grade Mount Herob graduation and the middle school graduation this year and very grateful that we were there to see it in person, especially at Mount Herob when it got moved inside. Um, I thought both graduations were really well done and I really appreciate all the hard work that went into getting it set up by our grounds crew and, um, all the teachers that were there to support the children. It's really a great event. Uh, my other question that I have tonight, though, is I'm wondering if there has been a, um, greater, uh, exiting of students from the public schools this year more than other years? I'm just wondering if you have stats on how many kids are being pulled out, um, from the public school district to go to private school this year and how that compares to other years? And I just also second, um, the woman who just spoke that I'm not a fan of iReady. My son would do a path, get a thirty-seven percent on it, and then he had to redo the whole path again, you know, taking up hours of time just to get a passing score. And lots of time on the iReady assessments that they do, he tells me he gets very bored of it and just starts guessing his way halfway through. So I don't know if that's truly giving a clear picture of how our students are doing, both in math and language arts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other hands. Dr. Mingle, there weren't too quick.
Yeah, so I would just suggest for, so on the exiting, the student enrollment question, I don't have data about something like that in front of me at the moment, but we do review the enrollment trackers monthly with the board and that's something we could follow up on. October fifteenth is the key date. That's the year-over-year where you actually track that. The questions about iReady, uh, if school was in session, I would recommend reaching out to the teacher, but since it's not, I would recommend reaching out to either the school principal or to Mr. Kimmick so that he can get more information about the concerns and address. Uh, he would be the best able to do that. Uh, that's not really something that would be a board agenda item directly.
Okay, we, we had two more hands raised. We'll just, we'll, we'll allow those people to speak, but, uh, but now it's down to one. So, Mrs. Singleton, you will be the last commentator.
Rachel, Rachel Singleton, twenty-two, Delaware Trail West. Um, I just wanted to echo what Mrs. Armay said about the eighth grade graduation. Being outside at the high school was excellent. Having it videoed was wonderful, too. Livestreaming, um, certainly helped my family overseas in Europe get to see it, which they wouldn't necessarily do, uh, because we were only assigned four, four, uh, four tickets. So, um, that's something COVID does bring some good things. That, that certainly is something that we should please keep in mind for future years. Because that's, uh, one way of getting grandparents involved in, um, seeing, you know, the, the graduation of their, their grandchildren. And also I'd like to say the speeches at graduation, Mr. Villas in particular, was, uh, very uplifting for the students and he did a remarkable job and listening to, and you could really hear how much he cares for the students in, you know, in his charge. Um, so thank you to all that attended and especially to Mr. Villas for, um, hi, his words. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Singleton. That brings us to the end of public commentary. So now we are going to move back into executive session. Mr. Bishi?
A motion to, um, whereas the open public meetings act, SA-ten, four, eleven, Prince Board of Education, to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters now, therefore, be resolved, the Board of Ed adjourns to closed session to discuss pers, uh, specific perspective of current employees, unless all who could be adversely affected. The superintendent's evaluation action will not be taken upon return to public session. Uh, the length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately sixty minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, warrant time to Board of Education members only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? I'm going to ask that somebody let me know when you come back and.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I would like to make a motion to go back into public session.
Second. All in favor of going back into public session? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Friend in favor, aye.
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 Okay, goodbye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Bye.
You too.